Helping people.
Yeah.
If we're, if we just say, "Look, that's the coin moving forward."
That's right.
Come there down this thing.
I mean, I'll do it then, but it actually should be on the calendar, you know? But I'll just do it.
And it's better when we have more.
I forgot about that. It's so hurried. I made an ocean with yesterday.
Yeah. Until I finish my day, I take another nap, and it was not in the case.
No rush.
I've seen pictures.
I wouldn't worry about it.
We're gonna get free hot dogs.
Mayor, if we, if we get the meeting done quickly, the chief and I are gonna go in the dunk tank together.
All right.
Together?
Yes. One of us is gonna be on the other's shoulders. We're gonna flip the coin who's on, who's the bottom.
Don't let the dunk really do it.
All right, with that in mind, committee order. May I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on a business that's before us this evening? And please join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quickly, take the robe.
Alderman Brennan, Alderman Begley. Alderman Basso.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Scully.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan. Alder, Alderman Clifford.
Here.
All right, we've got a couple of special presentations tonight. Bob Starzak, chairman of the Car Classic, come up and your show.
You know, it's starting to be a tradition for us for our sponsors, long time sponsors, ten, ten years or more, when one team is popping up, you know, we try to honor our sponsors first, you know, because without the sponsors, we do not have a show.
Hey, Bob, talk into the microphone so that...
Without the sponsors, we do not have a show. So I try to honor them as much as I possibly can. This year, we'd like to honor C and B Bank for being one of our main sponsors of the show. They've been doing it for ten years straight now, and it's, uh, can't do it without the sponsors. Thank you very much. All right, then we have, uh, Van Bugen Sign. They've also been a sponsor for ten years. They're basically what they call an in-kind sponsor. Any signs that we have are done by Van Bugen Signs. Anybody need signs for the business? Please, Sam, please. And I asked John New Yorkson's sons to come, and, uh, yeah, I saw the son out there walking around, so I would give him his, uh, award.
They're kind of clogged up with business.
Right. And that, yeah. And then I'd like to have the rest of the committee come up here. And our split-the-pot winner this year was Jessica Frye. She got the, she had the winning ticket. That won the thing. We have a certificate for her, 'cause the check will not be ready until Friday. Sorry about that.
Checks in the mail.
Checks in the mail. If you come up here, please. Uh, she's going to college right now, so it's a very big help for her. Right, she just started college.
This will help with my tuition. Yay!
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
How much was it, Bob?
I don't remember. It's over, uh, almost thirty, thirty-four hundred dollars, I believe.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one hundred dollars.
Thirty-one forty-two, thirty-one fifty.
Thirty-one, okay. And then, uh, just remember, we need more sponsors. We still have Lois Duran over here. She's ninety-three years old, and she still helps the car show every single year.
Ninety-four in a month.
Ninety-four in a month, okay. Ninety-four in a month and still helping us. And most of all, I'd like to thank the city for letting us put the show on. Public Works does a fantastic job for us. The police department is outstanding out there, uh, for hours. Fire Department, we use that as our command center, and we could not do any of this without the city and, uh, the Public Works, Fire Department, and, uh, everybody else involved in the city. Workers in the city, uh, help us out, too. We do appreciate it. Thank you.
Bob, besides thanking everyone else, we want to thank you guys, 'cause without you guys and your work, especially yourself, Bob, you've been doing this for so many years, and I know.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, but I know it gets, uh, gets rough, but, uh, you know, you're really appreciated. The number of people that come out that night, uh, the number of merchants we have, the number of cars that continue to grow every year, so I don't know how we can continue to handle that.
More parking lots.
Needing more parking lots. All right, thanks, Bob. 4B is actually in the wrong spot, but I'm gonna put it on there anyway. Need approval, approval of the special event application for Chicago Christian High School to conduct their light-to-night family fun run on September sixth, twenty twenty-five, from four-thirty till six-thirty.
So move.
Moved by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Under the consent calendar, we've got the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting from, uh, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the approval of the payroll and voucher list for the period ending August first, twenty twenty-five. Need a motion to approve that?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Clifford.
Second.
Second by Alderman McGrogan. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
All right. Go seal bids, uh, under, uh, city... Anything else you want to? Want a microphone, Bob? Okay. All right, a couple of things tonight, uh, just keep in mind, the kids are going back to school, uh, some this week, some the week after, uh, so, uh, you know, as you drive through town, please, please pay attention to the kids as they go through the, the town and walk to the schools and alike. Also, we hit, uh, Thursday night, we have the dedication of the latest piece of art for the, uh, Paleos Art Commission. It's, uh, gonna be over there next to the gazebo at six forty-five, right before the concert. Uh, they do a great job, you know, since we've started the art commission, we've probably got close to thirty or forty pieces of art throughout town, murals and statues and things like that, so it just adds to the, the quality of life we have here in town. And, uh, that being said, I said before the key, the concert, uh, this week, uh, Thursday, and the next three Thursdays, uh, which is kind of unusual, but we have to schedule some rain dates in there. We have our, our concert series. Again, uh, C and B was just here, uh, they sponsor it, and, uh, this week is, uh, Zidico, jazz or something like that.
It's a kind of a swampy Louisiana.
Yeah.
Dance music.
That's kind of what I thought.
They're actually pretty good. I've seen that group. Good, they're very good.
And then on...
That's this Thursday, Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. And August fourteenth, we have the Chicago Experience coming back for their probably eighth time, I think, uh, my favorite group as, as a whole. And then on the twenty-first, the rescheduled Nashville Electric is coming out. So the next three Thursdays at, uh, in, uh, the gazebo will have concerts coming on, so, uh, just to keep that in mind if you're looking for something to do and get out, uh, in a nice evening night like tonight. Uh, next, I have the request for appointment of Maria Copan to the, uh, Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term, three-year term, I'm sorry, expiring August fifth, twenty twenty-eight.
So moved.
Moved by Lewandowski, second by Alderman Key. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is the request to, I need a motion to approve the public safety memorandum of understanding with school district two eighteen to provide a, the source, uh, school resource officer at the cost which is fully reimbursable by the school district.
So move.
Moved by Alderman Key, third second. Second by Alderman Scully. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. And then, uh, that's all I have. The city clerk?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report from the clerk's office today.
I understand. Alderman, or, uh, treasurer Demicki had a wait to be at.
Yes, um, and so I'm standing in his stead, and I'm here to report, the treasurer's report for the cash, um, period, I'm, I'm sorry, for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. In the general fund, the beginning cash was five million eight hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars. The revenue was nine hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The expense was nine hundred and ninety-six and a hundred and forty-two dollars. Other source use was twenty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars. The ending cash balance was five million eight hundred and three thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. The total all funds, uh, for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, the beginning cash was twenty-eight million four hundred and sixty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. The revenue was one million nine hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. The expense was two million eight hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. The other source use was thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars with the ending cash balance of twenty-seven million five hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars.
Did a great task, eh?
Move to approve.
Moved by Alderman Keys, or second by Alderman Lewandowski.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Opposed?
Motion carries. Uh, city attorney?
No report.
Communications, anyone have?
Mayor, I have, uh, one. So I, I got an email from Linda Shiepo, uh, actually today. Uh, it's a follow-up to that public arts commission that you just mentioned, and we'll probably talk about it on finance. But it says, "I'm writing on behalf of the Public Arts Commission. We are in the process of trying to add a new light display for lights in the heights. It's been a couple of years since we added to this display. Uh, we chose a three-D angel with a lease price of over, well, it's five thousand eighty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents and a purchase price of twelve thousand seven nineteen oh eight. We secured the lease price of five million oh eighty-seven sixty-three with three, uh, thousand dollars from the beautification, and we are putting in an additional two thousand oh eighty-seven sixty-three from, uh, allocated budget. Our other pieces were purchased through the artistic lighting with a lease-to-purchase program, which is what I thought we were going to do here. Come to find out that the lease purchase program is no longer offered. Um, where the hell was, let's see. Oh, so we are short seven thousand six thirty-one forty-five. I don't know if there's any discretionary funding to help with this. I'm working on, looking for other possible funding options, but if that doesn't work out, is the city able to help us on this endeavor? This commitment is time-sensitive due to the fact that they have a limited number, um, for this particular display. Thanks in your advance, we thank the city in advance. Best regards, Linda." I talked to her today, too. She's also gonna try to drum up, uh, donations from, uh, people in town that might want to contribute to the, uh, Public Arts Commission, and, um, and since tonight was the meeting, she wanted to get this out in front of us, 'cause I guess it is, like she said, time-sensitive. So, um, I told her, I said, "We really don't have much that we can do, because we didn't run this through finance, uh, but we're gonna, we'll have a meeting next, uh, month, and I'll mention something in finance."
I also, uh, got her teamed up with, uh, CMAP for a grant for, uh, they have a lighting grant through Nycor. Kamoth Edison, I'm sorry. Kamoth Edison, so, uh, she's gonna be applying for that. That's about two or three thousand dollars, too.
And one of the things I was thinking we could maybe do, too, um, if we have enough in the surplus funds, to just maybe advance it and then kind of like, uh, is a IOU from the future budgets for the next couple of years, and we could play around with this in a number of ways. We could kick it around next week in finance.
Okay, great, thank you.
The reason, uh, just to, to jump in on that, the, the beautification gave them the down payment on it because there is time-sensitive. That's...
Yeah.
I mean, we were gonna contribute to it, but we did it quickly for that reason.
Here's a picture of it.
I mean, this is what, if that twelve or seventeen thousand's gonna get you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, in, the long and short of it is, it was a lease to own, and then that didn't turn out to be the deal?
Yes.
Okay.
In the past, we leased owned all the equipment. This is, this is the one, so they'll do that.
They got the lease program out.
Yeah. All right, any other communications, anyone for council? Citizens wish to address the council? Harland?
Harland Wyvoda, seventy-six forty west one hundred thirty-fifth street. Uh, just, I, my question was for Dan Brennan, but he's not here. Uh, I was just curious if the city, if we, if due to the water, all this water work, sewer work that the city is doing, is it affecting the quality of our water? Because the water in my houses has changed, and I was just wondering if it has changed in anybody else's house. Uh, we have stains in our toilets now, we have stains in our shower, uh, from the water when we never had that before.
And you're the first person I've heard that.
That's why I was just curious.
Mr. Mayor, I think by statute, uh, we, we have to report the quality of water once a year.
We do.
And, and I don't, I don't know the timeliness in that, but, uh, perhaps, you know, just the, the latest report that, um, that Public Works issued, maybe we can get to miss.
Maybe we can have someone.
I was just curious if anybody else was just seeing, noticing the same thing. Obviously, now that we got a, you know, we're an empty nester, with, the toilets, we have four bathrooms, the toilets are not used as much, so wherever it's sitting, it stains, so, and it, but it never stained before.
Okay. And you're on my committee, I'll follow up with, uh, Public Works on that for you, Harland.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Great, finance committee?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the only thing I was gonna report is, uh, for next Tuesday's meeting, we're gonna make a time adjustment. Um, I've got to survey the, uh, members of the committee to find out what's a good time. You know, possibly, like, either a little bit later, or possibly earlier, or maybe the next morning. There's a couple of conflicts.
Okay.
Especially from one person I know.
All right.
That's my end of my report.
Public Safety, Alderman Basso.
Yes, Mayor, I have several items on the agenda this evening. Item number eleven, motion to direct Public Works Director to paint stop bars and lettering on Ashenella Drive at the intersection of Comanche Drive and Shock Town Road for evaluation purposes.
Okay. Moved by Alderman, uh, Basso, second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number twelve, motion to the director city attorney to update the motorized scooter ordinance.
Just second.
Moved by Alderman Clifford, second, yeah, Alderman Basso, second by Alderman Scully. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number twelve. No, maybe item number thirteen. Motion to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance for e-bike based on the current state statute.
Moved by Alderman Basso.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Scully. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, item number fourteen, motion to the director city attorney to draft an ordinance for all-terrain vehicles and off-highway motorcycles based on current state statute.
Moved by Alderman Basso, second by Alderman Scully. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that's the end of my report.
All right. Municipal grounds and property, Alderman Begley.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I have a motion to approve the proposals for Ravenholde with Morphin Construction General Carpentry to remove and replace the Ramp of Lake Catherine's clubhouse in the amount of sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Begley, second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Begley. Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, I have a motion to approve the purchase of composite decimate material. Even the associated hardware for the Lake Catherine clubhouse ran in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars, and that will be from Schilling Lumber.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Begley and second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford. Alderman Begley.
Yes. Is that the end of my report? Um, I appreciate you letting me connect remotely this evening. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Plenty Zoney, Alderman Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have a motion to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance approving the special use to allow a group home within the premises of one twenty-four twenty-one South Sixty-Ninth Avenue containing within the following PIN, two four dash three zero dash three one four dash zero zero three dash zero 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 zero.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Scully, second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's it?
Uh, that's off my report.
All right. Alderman Key, rec.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I wanted to add to the concert, uh, announcement that you said is that those concerts start at seven o'clock to eight-thirty, so it's, come out and...
I was gonna say that, but I wasn't sure it was seven thirty.
Seven, seven to eight-thirty. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Key, is that Sadeko, uh, group, that's this Thursday or one of the...
It's this, um, it's this Thursday.
It's a really good group.
Yep.
Two days.
And the Chicago one is always, you know, crowded all the way out to College Drive, so...
All right, roads of construction, Alderman Clifford.
Uh, just a work update, uh, the works, uh, finishing up on Cypress Avenue. Uh, work continuing on the reconstruction of Herald Avenue, and the reconstruction of Melvina Avenue was, uh, about to begin. Other net, uh, road programs are spot there, and a few, uh, these are the major projects that are left to do, and hope to have them some. And, uh, Hundred Thirty-First is closed going north from Hundred Thirty-First Southwest Highway, going north a few blocks.
West.
For the, uh...
Going west, west.
Going west with the stormwater, uh, water. In other words, Southwest Highway, Hundred Thirty-First going south is closed to Hundred Thirty-Fifth while they do the stormwater.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
That's it.
All right. Place of permission franchises, Alderman Lewandowski.
Mr. Mayor, I have no report this evening.
All right, very good. Water and sewer, Alderman Brennan's not here, I understand Alderman Begley's gonna handle it?
Yeah, I'll handle that, and thank you, Mayor. This evening, we have a number of motions through the Water and Sewer Department or Committee. Uh, first off, we have a motion to approve payment number ten to Kelly Metzeli Plumbing for the water meter replacement program in the amount of eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Begley, second by Alderman Key. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford. Alderman Begley. Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Next, we have a motion to approve payment number five to National Power Rodding Corporation for the two thousand twenty-four sewer rehabilitation program in the amount of five thousand four hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Begley and second by Alderman Key. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Begley. Alderman Basso. Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Next, we have a motion to approve to award the two thousand twenty-five sewer and manhole rehabilitation program to the Lobiter Performance Pipeline Incorporated for the lowest bid in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Begley and second by Alderman Key. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford. Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have a motion to approve the proposal for construction-based engineering services with Lockwood, Andrews, and Newman for the installation of a new three-hundred-thousand-gallon ground storage tank not to exceed a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Begley and second by Alderman Key. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford. Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key. Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Next, we have a motion to approve payment for professional engineering services to RJN Group for the twenty-twenty-five sanitary sewer rehabilitation and the twenty-twenty-five on-call underground infrastructure services rendering through June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-nine cents.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Begley and second by Alderman Key. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key. Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have a motion to approve payment for professional engineering services to Strand Associates Incorporated for the alternative water supply analysis rendering through June twen, June thirtieth, Next, we have a motion to approve payment for professional engineering services to Strand Associates Incorporated for the alternative water supplier analysis rendering through June twen- June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-one cents.
Second.
Move by Alderman Begley, and second by Alderman Key. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Next, we have a motion to approve the purchase of C Click Fix Work Order Software and Next Request, which is a FOIA software from Civic Plus in the amount of nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents.
Second.
Move by Alderman Begley, and second by Alderman Key. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
And finally, I would like to make a motion to direct the city attorney to draft the addition of section fifty-point-three-one, the water sewer rate penalty adjustments to the administrative code.
Move by Alderman Begley.
Second.
Second by Alderman Key. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you so much for telling us.
All right, thank you. This is the economic development, Alderman Key.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, no report.
Cable TV?
A brief report, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, Paleos Sites TV four has again broken, uh, their own record for the last thirty days with thirty-two hundred views on the internet, um, YouTube channel, uh, and that excludes the Comcast and the AT&T viewership. Uh, several hundred viewers, viewers who were, uh, focused on the classic car show, the then and now, and the Paleos Sites Fire and Police Department, so I think this might be evidenced by the crowd out, um, out in the, uh, parking lot today. Uh, we just want to, uh, also point out that the, uh, all of this has been done by the very highly-trained volunteer staff and permanent staff. That's all for my report.
All right, thank you. Any old business, anyone have? Citizens wishing to ask questions about tonight's business? If not, uh, any new business?
Uh, just an update, what Alderman Basso's committee, in case people didn't know what that was about, it was presented to us by the police department, what they're going to do on regulation of these, uh, motor ve- not, motorized motor, or vehicles, motor vehicles, whatever you want to call them, under state guidelines such as, uh, motor scooters, pedal assist, battery sizes, speed, golf carts is the ATV part of it, because, uh, there's been a few complaints, more than a few complaints on, uh, the safety aspect of it.
Just, if I may, uh, just to, uh, go off of, um, Alderman Clifford, um, it's going on, not just in our community, but in all communities, you see this a lot in the newspapers, where kids are getting hit on these bikes, um, and we're trying to be proactive to, to, um, reach out to the community, to teach them, um, proper, uh, rules of the road, and, um, and enforce, um, our organs, ordinances.
Many cases, state ordinances.
Yes.
All right, anything else? Entertainer, motion adjourned.